Recording in progress.
Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our Friday edition of the Redevelopment Commission meeting. Mr. Shalio.
Good morning. We have one agenda item today, and that is Resolution 2023-15. And 2023-15 is a resolution of the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission approving amendments to the declaratory resolution and economic development plan for the New Carlisle Economic Development Area and all matters relating there, too. It's pretty wordy, so let's maybe take a little pictorial walk through economic development, and specifically, what I'd like to do is maybe give a little precursor to the presentation and talk a little bit about economic development areas and TIF districts and just some of the terminology. So, on a very basic level, granted by state law, local municipalities and jurisdictions are able to create economic development areas. And an economic development area is a designated area, and we're going to work through and talk about the designation of the New Carlisle Economic Development Area today, but it's a legally defined area, and you can do economic development activities and you can do redevelopment activities. Both are defined in state law, both have different activities subsets of those. If it's economic development, it's extension of utilities to facilitate new development. If it's redevelopment, it's acquisition and cleansing of properties to create new development opportunities. So, living in St. Joe County, you've seen kind of both of those happen, the redevelopment areas that have cleaned the Studebaker Corridor or the Uniroil area downtown of Mesauqua. Some of the economic development area activities have included the redevelopment and development of the Ireland Road Corridor, or maybe the areas around the airport with the industrial parks or Grape Road. So, within the county itself, there are, one, two, three, five, or four economic development commissions or redevelopment commissions. City of Mesauqua has one, City of South Bend has one, there are five. Lakeville has one, Walkerton has one, and St. Joe County has one. So, there are economic development areas in each of those different jurisdictions. The county itself right now has five economic development areas. We have the Solar Project EDA, we have the Northwest Cleveland EDA, we have the M. General Area EDA, the Wyatt EDA, and then the New Carlisle Economic Development Area. Yes, five. So, from a very high-level standpoint, and I like to, just because I like pie, like to describe economic development areas and TIF districts as kind of a pie. So, the economic development area is the pie tin in which, you know, an economic development area is created. So, when you have a pie tin, stuff is put within that tin. So, if the tin is the geography of which the EDA is described, then the pie itself are the TIF districts or, more specifically, the allocation areas. And there can be one TIF district or one allocation area in an EDA. Most of ours have only one, or there can be multiple. So, there are multiple times you can cut the pie. Presently, the New Carlisle Economic Development Area has two EDA, or two allocation areas. Today, we're going to talk about adding two more and kind of reshaping the pie pieces a little bit. So, from a very basic level, that's kind of the geography. So, an economic development area is the pie tin, the TIF district are the allocation areas of the pie within it. Kind of the next piece, when we talk about TIF, so, the way TIF works is when an economic development area is established, a base year is created. So, the tax base is reviewed for all of the properties within an economic development area, and a base is established. That base is established on January 1st of the year which an area is created. So, this EDA amendment change that we're looking at right now will be effective based on the tax year of 2023, because we're making these improvements or these changes in 2023. So, our base year for these changes will be 2023. But, as you create different slices of the pie, the base year and the base assessed value of the base is based on the year that that pie piece was created. So, Phil Fasenda will talk maybe a little bit about the nuance of some of that year setting as we move forward through this presentation. So, as the base is set, the base consists of all of the taxes paid to all of the underlying taxing units. So, in the New Carlisle Economic Development Area, we have a little, generally, there's four taxing units, or five taxing units that are affected in the New Carlisle area. But, because the town has annexed some of the economic development area, there's actually six in the NCDAs. So, there's the county, the township, the town, in a small sliver of it, the library district, and the airport authority. So, those are the six taxing units impacted that make up the tax base or the base assessment and the base year of the area. So, any taxes that are generated at that time still get paid to those six underlying taxing units. Any property taxes and any improvements made to residential property in an economic development area, all those do not get collected by the TIF district or by the TIF increment collection. So, the only thing that gets collected is commercial and industrial development taxes as well as multifamily taxes. So, if you have a multifamily housing project, a portion of those will get entered into the TIF increment area. So, if you can see on the model, if the economic development team is doing its job over the course of the life of the TIF, and the life of a TIF is 25 years, from the date created 25 years out, any increment that's collected in there, so any new development that's collected is collected into the fund. It's not, doesn't go against the levy values, doesn't go against any of the other values. So, there's actually more value that's created because of an EDA, and more revenue is collected into that area. But again, that revenue has to stay and be collected and do projects within that EDA. You can do projects outside, but it has to serve the economic development area. So, the argument is that the money spent has to be used in or serving the area. So, any taxes collected for that 25-year period or any increment collected that's generated stays within that area. Now, if you have an economic development area with multiple TIF districts, that money is somewhat fungible across the TIF lines. But generally, again, we try to look when we do our budgeting or do our projects, that if a project is in allocation area one, we generally try to use the money that's in allocation area one to pay a project and so forth. And then, at the end of the life, then the TIF expires, and the money goes back into the general fund. Now, the misnomer is that you have not only the base, but then all the incremental taxes that then go to the underlying taxing units. And what really is the case is, all of the money collected then, at the end of the term of the years, goes back in, but then is impacted by circuit breaker, levies, and all of the other things. So, again, there's this misnomer that, well, gosh, you collected a million dollars into the EDA. It'd be good if we got that million dollars. We don't get a million dollars if the TIF went away. What you get is, you get probably a lower tax rate, a higher assessed value, other things, but that money isn't at the million dollars. It gets lost and doesn't get collected. So, over the period of the TIF, the benefit of TIF and the reason why TIF exists is because it creates a funding stream outside of the general budget process that allows for projects to be done in an area. So, infrastructure, property acquisition, property redevelopment, all sorts of things that generally can't happen. You're not supposed to use TIF money for ongoing maintenance. You're not supposed to use TIF money just for a regular repair of something. It's supposed to be used for upgrades, new projects, things like that. So, again, we try to be judicious when we bring you projects, that they are for upgrades or expanded projects or property acquisition for other things. One of the other things we'll talk about later in the presentation is property acquisition. So, property acquisition can be done by the Redevelopment Commission. There's two ways that we tend to purchase property. We, the Redevelopment Commission, can purchase property, or through resolution, we can provide funds to the Board of Commissioners to buy properties. So, at the last meeting on Tuesday, we approved funds on two different cases because a property wasn't on the acquisition list contained within the economic development plan to buy those properties. The properties that, because of a larger strategy, we knew we needed to buy, or because they're properties that at some point in the future will fall onto the acquisition list. That's why we do the resolution, to provide funds to the other body. So, that's TIF 101, I guess, and maybe a little bit of 102, if there's any questions on that. I guess what I'd like to do is maybe walk through the project itself. So, back, from a historical overview, back in 1987, the first economic development district was created in the New Carlisle area. So, the New Carlisle Economic Development District, or actually, at that time, it was called the St. Joseph County Economic Development District Number One, was created and formed in response to the IONTEC-IONCOAT project. And so, that project was created, or that project area was created specifically to create a water treatment plant and to provide sewer, or money for sewer pipes to be connected from the sewer from IONTEC to be connected into the South Bend Sewer Network. It's ironic that here we sit now, years later, talking about the water treatment plant and those sewer pipes. So, that was why the area was originally created. And again, at that point in time, in 87, the life of a TIF, the statutory life of a TIF in an economic development area could be 30 years. So, over time, the legislature and others have reduced the time limit. Based on economic development pressure in the area and seeing that infrastructure was in place based on an expanded water treatment plant and a water and sewer network in that area, in 1997, the county was asked to expand the area again and grew the area to roughly 4,000 acres. And so, what you see there is economic development district number two. So, at that point in time, there were two separate economic development districts adjacent to each other, or one, they were contiguous to each other, I guess, more appropriately. So, Area One was within Area Two. In 2008, as IONTEC-IONCOAT was looking to do a major expansion, economic development area district, economic area number one was created. So, within economic development district number two, the pie that had been District One was merged in, and then what they did is, so they filled in the area, and then they did what they call creation of a designated taxpayer. So, a designated taxpayer designation is a property that then collects personal property into the TIF increment stream. So, generally, you only collect real property, and then personal property goes where personal property goes. If you designate a taxpayer for a property, then that, all the personal property generated in that area stays in the TIF district. So, the benefit of that was, as they were bringing in new equipment to Tech and Coat, all of that new personal property would create increment, which would then create value for the TIF district. And so, that's why the money was kept. So, that was done, so it was for Tech and Coat and Air Gas. And so, that was done in 2008. So, I would like to go back to 97 real quick, great year. But, if you note, in 97, the area extended south of State Road Two and extended north of US 20. So, the area, again, covered those two areas. So, in 2008, it added economic area number one. And then, in 2016, which was eight years later, hadn't really done a lot with the TIF districts as far as TIF management or with the EDAs, hadn't done a lot with the management to the areas. And so, what we did is, we looked at all of the economic development areas, went through, reviewed the properties on the acquisition list, the properties that were within the areas, just to make sure everything aligned. And so, we started with the New Carlisle area. So, we took the existing area, and we renamed it, we added some property to the area. So, you can see the gray shaded areas. And Shelley, I don't know if you can move the people, maybe just a little off to the side, or, yeah, there you go. So, there weren't, other than just a couple little there on the east side. So, there were some expansions made, and some of those expansions were made based on project potential. So, like Bendix Woods was added, the little nub up in the top-left corner was where AEP was going to do a solar farm. Property South was added, the rest of the 640 acres is Sebastian's property. South of State Road Two was added because of a potential project at that time. So, some other properties were added and the area was cleaned up. So, this is what, in 2016, when we did a plan amendment, this is what the area looked like. And then, we split it in two. So, what we did is, the Energy Center was just approved in 2015, was going to start construction in 2016. So, we looked at the area and we pruned it, and so we split it in two. And so, anything in the darker gray shade was anything that was presently, at that point in time, collecting increment. So, it was creating value to the area. And so, then, everything else in the kind of lighter hatch was what we called Area Two. And that was, those were the areas that we thought, over the next 25 years, would create value. So, the Energy Center, in that area, we added Smith-Reddy Mix. There've been some other projects that have come online in that area. And so, what we wanted to do is then collect for the longest period of time that value, but then also be able to create a situation where we could bond. When we bond for a project, we bond for a 20-year period of time. And so, by creating a new allocation area, it resets the clock, and so it creates a new 25 years of life for that allocation area. So, we knew that we needed to sell a bond to do some physical improvements in the area. We had some water and sewer extensions with the energy plant. We ended up paving Bendix Woods with some of that money. We did the fiber optics project. There were a lot of projects that, over that period of time, the $8 million bond that we sold, went to pay for that. The other thing that was done was because we had the Energy Center and we knew what the cash stream looked like over a period of years. When the bond was needed to be sold for the Double Track project, or our portion for the Double Track project needed to be done, the economic development area number two, and actually, the whole EDA, was used as the funding source for the yearly bond payment for the Double Track project. So, the county was responsible for, I believe it was $9 million, and so that $9 million, a portion of that every year is taken out of our EDA to pay for the Double Track project. So, the other thing we did when we created Area Two is, we designated the St. Joe Energy Center as a designated taxpayer. So, at this point in time, there were four designated taxpayers in the New Carlisle Economic Development Areas. So, the Energy Center, Air Gas, and then Tech and Coat. At that point in time, when the area was originally created, there was never an acquisition list. So, as part of every economic development area plan, you create an acquisition list. These are the X amount of properties that you may need to acquire for a project, or you know you're going to acquire, or could at some point in time acquire, either for road improvements or utility expansions, or a whole number of things. So, at that point in time, we added 19 properties to the acquisition list. And we're trying to be judicious at that time, because we knew that the two projects that we were really working on at that time were rail expansion into the area and the relocation of the Nespa Johnny ditch. And so, the 19 properties on the western side of the corridor were put under the acquisition list. Of those properties on the acquisition list, the Redevelopment Commission purchased, one, two, three, six of those properties. There were three up in the northwest quadrant, no, six, seven, eight, eight properties, I'm sorry. Six, or three at the northwest quadrant of Edison and Walnut, two properties between Edison and Early, and then there were three properties at the northeast corner of Willow and State Road Two. The Willow and State Road Two properties have been sold to General Motors. The properties at the north are being held in the event that we continue the rail project at some point in time, as well as the two properties in between Edison and Early. The Edison and Early property, though, based on their, the ditch runs through the property. So, the properties on the west side, one is actually a certified forest, the northern half is a certified forest, the other one could be put into that category, we haven't made that determination yet. But they're being held to serve as part of a green park area in kind of the western part of the EDA. So, that brings us to where we are today. And so, we've looked over the years at potential plan expansions and talked about different things that we could do with the EDA. So, the EDA, as it sits today, is, there are 237 parcels in the area, 5,426 acres, and there's two allocation areas. And so, that's what the area looks like today. And so, over the last several months, we've been looking at different ways that we can move some of the allocation areas around, are there things that we should add, are there things that we should subtract? And so, we started through a process to work through that. Spent a lot of time working through the numbers, and there are a lot of people to thank for that. So, Steve and Daniel Dalton have helped us with the numbers, as well as our GAS team have been instrumental in that. Frank has helped on that to a degree. And then, we'd really like to send a shout to Phil Fasenda and Randy Rumpolo for the legal side, that they helped with putting all these documents together. So, as we started the plan amendment, this is where we started today. As we've looked at a western expansion of the area and an eastern expansion of the area, the western expansion of the area would add 42 parcels or approximately 865 acres to the area. And again, I would like to note that they're added to the area, so they'll be part of, and we'll talk about which allocation area they'll fit within, but if they're a residential property, they'll still pay taxes to the underlying taxing units, and all of the properties added in will still continue to pay property taxes to the underlying taxing units. It's just new increment that's created above and beyond that would go to the allocation area. So, there's six different expansion areas in the western expansion area. Expansion Area One is really related long-term to a couple of projects, specifically to property that the Commissioners own, bought with redevelopment funds for a future train station project. So, we bought the trailer park, and we're looking at some adjacent property. Area Two and Three are actually in allocation area number two presently, based on the way they're assessed, and will be moved to allocation area number one. Area number Four, Five, and Six are areas where we see that there's some potential projects, whether it's utility extensions, infrastructure improvements, or some other projects that we're looking at, that it's just a little better served that those are in the economic development area themselves. The eastern expansion would include 36 additional parcels for 631 acres. And again, those are being added because they are adjacent or being considered as part of IEC project sites. So, the plan amendment now would include 309 total parcels in the area and would expand the area from roughly 5,000-plus acres to 6,900 acres. So, this would be the map of what the whole area, if approved, would look like. And then, so really, the crux of why we're here today is allocation area number three. So, when we did the GM deal, started the GM deal last year and did it again this year with GM and Samsung, one of the things that we knew we'd have to do is sell a bond to pay for the infrastructure improvements that needed to be done. So, again, going back to the conversation about life of an allocation area, we had used years of life off of allocation area number two. The GM project generally sat all in allocation area number two, some of it was in allocation area number one. So, we knew that we needed to split the, or to correct the split of the allocation area. It's tough to have a project from a taxing purpose in two different allocation areas. So, we knew that we needed to clean that up just on a base level. But secondly, to bond for the project, we would have to have 25 years of life for an allocation area, because we needed at least a 20-year bond to cover our expenses. Now, just as a refresher, the deal we struck with General Motors is, we did 10 years, 100% real property abatement, 10 years personal property abatement, or 15 years personal property abatement. But, we have an infrastructure fee that pays $4.5 million a year for 10 years. So, basically, the life of the real property abatement, we get $4.5 million in a year, or $45 million over 10 years. So, that would be the basis for paying the bond in the early years, and then, once the real property abatement wears off, we would pay the rest of it out of the increment generated off the real property. So, that is what would be the funding source for a bond, and so that's, again, why we broke off Area Number Three, is because, again, we needed, we made a commitment with the General Motors project, we have to honor that commitment, and the only way we can do that is to create this new allocation area with a 25-year period of life. The allocation area took in some area that had been in Area Number One, and then is also including parts of the area that are part of expansion, the eastern expansion area. So, it goes south of State Road Two and then generally east of Larison. Allocation Area Number Four does two things. It removes three properties that had been part of the original 2016 addition, but because the property straddled, the way we drew the boundaries, in some cases, split parcels, and the parcels weren't being reflected in tax collection, we just opted just to pull them out. So, it was easier just to pull those three little properties out on the far-right side of the page. And then, because of the way we had to connect, allocation areas have to connect, and you'll see that on the next slide. So, the only way we could get Area Two to connect to the rest of Area Two and not lose increment in the process was to go around this area, which just happens to be IEC Site Two. And so, it worked out that IEC Site Two then sits as allocation area number four. So, we create two new allocation areas with two 25-year lives. The other two areas, Area One and Area Two, which are, again, reflective on this map, and from a distance, it's hard to see the crosshats versus the hatchhats versus the dot hatch, how those all look, but in your package, you have the different maps. So, allocation area number one, allocation area two, three, and four then would be what this would create. So, then, the last piece of this is the plan amendment. And originally, we had 19 properties on the parcel acquisition list. The general practice in every community that does a plan amendment is to put every property in the economic development area onto the acquisition list. It's just, it's a best-practice process. So, in this particular case, it adds 290 parcels to the acquisition list for a total of 309 parcels. There are 37 properties of that parcel list that are owned by the county or the Redevelopment Commission or the Parks Department. So, you know, if you started going through the list and taking off IONTEC's and GM's and all the properties, but again, just because you're on the acquisition list doesn't mean you'll ever be acquired. So, it's just one of those that allows for flexibility in acquisitions. So, again, so this is a best-practice process, and so that would be part of the plan amendment. So, the plan that you have before you today is the complete declaratory resolution. And so, now, what I'd like to do is take a deep breath and pause for a moment and let Phil Fasenda maybe talk about the process of where we go. This is not, this is the first step in a multi-phase project, and then just kind of walk through where we go from here.
Good morning, Redevelopment Commissioners. Phil Fasenda from Barnes &amp; Thorber, 201, South Main Street, South Bend. Nice presentation, Bill. It's a lot to cover. From here, again, the reason, the primary driver for why we're here today is the GM project, and there will be financing that Bill discussed to fund infrastructure in or serving the area. So, today is the first step of declaring the new areas, so that new TIF can be collected. From here, under the statute, statutory procedure is that we go from here to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission and TIF statute is 40 years old, so the, was set up for any development, whether it be GM or, you know, a convenience store. And so, it's all designed to allow the Plan Commission to at least comment on our proceedings and determine whether there's anything that they need to understand or at least be notified from a zoning or what have you. Now, of course, with a project this size, they're aware, but statutorily, now, we go through the procedure, and that would be next Tuesday, that we would, that the Plan Commission would review your declaratory resolution and determine whether to approve it or not. If they approve, then it moves to the county executives, so the county Commissioners. And the county Commissioners do the same thing, review, and now you have elected officials that are looking over what has transpired here, and they determine whether to approve or not. If they approve, the step to come back to you is a public hearing, where we give, we give a notice, we publish a newspaper notice of a public hearing that will take place in November at the Redevelopment Commission. And there's also statutory requirements that tax impact statements be prepared by Senator Dalton as the municipal advisor for the county, and that those will be prepared and sent to the taxing units to show them, what impact does this have on TIF collection, or on property tax collection, et cetera. And then, at the public hearing, this body will then determine, after hearing from the public, whether to approve this action and adopt a confirmatory resolution. At that point, the only other step that is particular to St. Joe County and Lake County is that the county council also has to approve our action. Given timing, that can happen the night of the 14th. So, under our planning calendar, you would meet in the morning of the 14th, and the county council will meet that evening, and if the county council also approves, then we have, all we have to do at that point is file the various documents with the county recorder and county auditor to let them know that these changes have been made to the area. And as Bill mentioned, that is a procedure that they're familiar with. There's been multiple amendments to the area in the past. Can I answer any questions on any of that procedure? Can I answer any questions on any of that procedure? Okay, just, just one other thing I wanted to highlight is that we do have the financing that's going along at the same time. So there will be other steps that will, that you will be considering in the meeting in November in particular, and as we go through the financing. But there will, this is anticipated to be at least financing. And the reason we're doing lease financing, and I don't want to get too far past this meeting, because this meeting is about establishing the area. But we, you may have seen that the county is setting up a redevelopment authority, which is a leasing entity, that allows assets to be leased to the redevelopment commission. And the redevelopment commission will pay lease rentals. It essentially mirrors the debt service that is due on the bonds, but under Indiana law, it allows you, as a lease rental, to avoid tapping into debt limit, because there's a 2% debt limit for the redevelopment district, like there is for the county and City of South Bend and other taxing units. You need to, typically need to hold on to that 2% debt limit if there's ever an emergency that you need to use it. And this is a sizable project. So it was determined that we didn't want to eat up debt limit, so we are doing lease financing. I'll explain, or my colleagues will explain more about the debt financing later. But I just wanted to let you know that that is also coming down the pike at the same time. And this is the initial step on declaring the changes to the area. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I did, I have a question. Bill, this doesn't, we're just setting boundaries to allow things to move forward. None of this commits anybody to anything that's not been inked already, like the GM.
That's correct. Well, I mean, to the point that by doing this, it allows us the mechanism to sell the bond for the GM project, yes. But it doesn't commit us to any other projects down in the future.
I understand. I just want to kind of put that out there. This is just to kind of keep the opportunities rolling. Doesn't commit to any particular projects.
Correct.
I assume we've had some discussions with New Carlisle?
We met earlier this week and walked through this with them. So the couple-day break allowed us that opportunity.
Thank you.
And the township. So the town and the township executive leaders, so, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Phil, Mr. Fasenda. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-15?
Some move.
Second.
Any questions?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Goebel?
Aye.
Mr. Horvath?
Aye.
And Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
There's no additional business?
Nope.
So at this time, we move to public comment. First, the people here in attendance, if you'd like to address the commission, step to the podium and give us your name and address, please. And you're limited to three minutes.
Good morning. Deborah Durel, 21677 Autton Road, South Bend. Thank you for your work today. And thank you, Bill, for the 43 pages of reading late last night. I am encouraged by all of the work that the county is doing. I am a little concerned about the number of moves that are happening. It's a little hard to process all of this. So I'm looking forward to hearing more over the next month. I do want to thank you for allocating money recently to finish the updated comprehensive land use plan. And likewise, I'm also advocating that since it looks like we are going to be adding more money to the coffers, I do think one of the things that's hanging out there still is the classification of the wetlands that has never been done, that is very vulnerable to just about anything, any kind of change that might want to happen at the state level or the local industrial level, since the landowners' commitments are not completed or were removed. And also, to finish the IEC Part Two, I'm hoping that some of these funds can make their way to the entities like the area plan department. I do think they have their hands full. And also some of the consultants to do that good quality work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. Thank you for your work. Appreciate your attention. And you know how pressing this is for me, and how stressful it is on me. And thank you, Bill, earlier for the explanation on the, on the TIF district and the land acquisitions, how that, how the TIF district is affected by those land acquisitions. There was a, this is kind of off the issue, there was something about the allowing Mini Mountain Campground and any agriculture property to allow in a campground, RV park into the area, in areas zoned commercial or agricultural out in, out in our area. And here goes me crying wolf again. But to me, this is perfect example of what's going to go on out here. That GM knows they're not going to be able to get 1,700 workers from this area. I'm saying they're going, this is going to be the biggest campground, RV park in Indiana at the end of this, because they will be bringing in workers and keeping them in campgrounds, hopefully not from the border area while they're awaiting their immigration hearing, and pay them, they'll rent them airstream trailers in these campgrounds and compensate them. That's, that'll be part of their compensation at the battery plant. This is the way I'm seeing it. And that the rest of the compensation will go into their pocket, but it'd certainly be less than $1,650 an hour. But when you look at, they'll be provided with housing. There's, GM realizes they're not going to be able to hire 1,700 people from this area. So I guess we've got to set up a campground and make it accessible to RVs. No trailers. They've actually targeted the old trailer park as one of the RV sites. Why didn't we just leave the trailers there if we were going this route?
Who's targeted that?
It's on, it's on that, it's on the map. It's on one of the maps, and it's...
The trailer park that we tore down?
The trailer park you tore down. It's on one of the target areas for the, where they can go and call it an agriculture or commercial area and put in an RV park or campground, but not a trailer park. I just, they're scrambling, looking for where they're going to get 1,700 workers. And why, all of a sudden, Mini Mountain wants to expand and put in more campsites, probably tear down some woods back behind the area to make the place larger.
Mr. Caruso, your time's up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Jamie O'Brien here. I'm a taxpayer and resident of Granger. 15822 Cedar Ridge Court, Granger. Just wanted to note that GM has agreed, and this is from the Detroit Free Press, in a major development, GM has agreed to put the battery plants under the master contract with the union. So I suspect, and obviously, nothing's done until it's done, but at least with regard to the GM workers, I suspect the actual compensation is going to be quite a bit more than the preliminarily promised amount. So to the extent that that ties into any of your analysis. That's it.
Thank you. No one else in attendance? Is anyone online wishing to speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Okay, if you could...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Steve Francis, live up in Clay Township, Duty Lake Drive. Yeah, I just want to make a couple comments. I mean, you know, this is complicated stuff. And most of the public, including myself to some extent, even though I've studied TIFs and economic development for many years, difficult to understand. I do think, you know, the documents were not posted until late last night. It's concerning to me about the public process here, but the way it's been described, number one, you know, we're going to get, we're going to be able to actually have a public hearing on the day of the, when the confirming resolution is produced, I think it's November 14th, when the redevelopment commission passes that, when the county council passes that in the evening. And it's just not sufficient. I realize we can speak now, and we are, but the commissioners, you know, we can speak there. But I think that given the controversy in the area, the expansion of these districts beyond the boundaries of State Road Two and County Road 20, or, yeah, County Road 20, or State Road 20, is an expansion of the IEC, and it probably will go from there if you continue doing this. This is a controversial project. It has been from the very beginning to place a, an industrial zone right over a clean aquifer out in an agricultural zone. We have a county comprehensive plan in process, which we've heard nothing about for seven months, although many of us, 100 of us or more participated in it last year. And now you're rushing this through so you can start the count from the beginning of the year, is what I see, rather than taking the time that's necessary to see that the public in the area are informed and buy into it. You've informed the council at New Carlisle, but have they had really time to digest what's going on and what will happen to the tax base and so on? I really, I'm willing to bet that most county officials do not understand what you are doing here, even though you give good explanations that they don't understand the nature of TIFs and the effect. Why not wait until the county comprehensive plan is done to begin readjusting this, with the exception perhaps of the battery plant issues? It is just impossible to rush this stuff through and have adequate public input. I really chastise the redevelopment commission for voting on this without asking really many questions. I don't think many of you probably...
Mr. Francis, thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
I would ask that you reconsider the timing of all of this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak online? Okay. Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Goebel?
Aye.
Mr. Horvath?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.